We all. All right, the hour is 7:00 PM. We're gonna call the November 13th, 2025 Town of Portsmouth Planning Board Meeting to Order. Present tonight, we have Mr. Klukis, Mr. Tibbetts, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Harding, Mr. Garso, Ms. O'Connell, and Mr. Lopes as the Chair. We have a quorum. First up on our agenda is, do we have any continuances or modifications, Ms. Hitchen?
We do. We received a request from Turnpike Holdings LLC earlier today on November 13th, the application to Planning Board for Preliminary Plan Approval of Comprehensive Permit Project, a request for continuance at 97 Turnpike Ave. I'll read it into the record. Dear Ms. Hitchen, we represent Turnpike Holdings LLC, the owner of the real property located at 97 Turnpike Ave., Portsmouth, Rhode Island, and otherwise identified by the Town of Portsmouth tax assessor as plat 34, Lot 4. In connection with Turnpike Holdings' proposed redevelopment of the property, Turnpike Holdings has applied to the Town of Portsmouth Planning Board for preliminary plan approval of a comprehensive permit project, the preliminary plan application. The preliminary plan application is scheduled to be heard at the Board's meeting on November 13th, 2025. However, please accept this letter memorializing Turnpike Holdings' request for a continuance to the Board's next meeting. Please feel free to reach out to me via email or direct extension with any questions. Best regards, John D. Russell Esquire.
Okay, thank you.
They have asked that the meeting be to the next meeting, December 8th or July, January 11th.
December 11th or?
December, did I say July?
Yeah, December 11th.
We generally don't meet in December. They've asked that, to ask if we can meet in December. That would be December 11th.
Okay.
Do you, do you see anything else coming up as potential agenda items if we meet in December? That can't hold off? I mean, I'm.
They can, they can hold off. The next meeting would be January 8th.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell. And, but we, if you look at our annual calendar that we published, that you publish every year before January 1st, we did say that there was no meeting.
So we could have a special meeting on the 11th?
On December 11th, based on your availability.
The, before we go on to then, to decide this, I know Mr. Tibbetts asked, is there anything else? But isn't the zoning ordinance text amendment, aren't we still waiting on some ACLU information? I just asked Mr. Chacon about.
Yeah, I was asked today if we had feedback from the ACLU on the proposed changes to the signed ordinance. And I did email them today, but haven't gotten response. They have promised in advance of the council's next consideration to have that back. And so it will be available before the council first presents the ordinance change, but not necessarily, I mean, they weren't, they weren't aiming to get it in advance of this consideration. So we don't have anything from them yet.
But if we did have a, that would give us two items if we wanted to do it so. Okay. So what is, what's the Board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion that we move both of those to the December 11th meeting, as long as we take a vote right now and make sure that we'll have a quorum for that.
Okay, so we got a motion to move. Is there a second to move? Mr. Klukis, let's, let's, any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now let's ensure we have a quorum first, so. Mr. Klukis?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's myself, five, not positive. So we've got six, so we've got a quorum. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Hitchen, that has to be modified or continued?
So we're, are we continuing both the signed ordinance and Turnpike Holdings to December 11th?
Yes, to December 11th.
Okay. I have no other.
Okay.
Continuances then.
Next up is the approval of the September 25th, 25 Planning Board Minutes. What's the Board's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Garso, any discussion on the motion? I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is number three, approval of the October 9th, 2025 Planning Board Minutes. What's your pleasure?
Again, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Mr. Garso, any discussion on the motion? All right, here now, let's call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up is Elm Street Portsmouth Heights Subdivision Progress Report. We continued this from the October meeting. There was going to be some other work that had to be done, and I think our DPW Director has been in direct contact with the applicant. Is that correct? Can you just?
Chris Harkins is here.
Mr. Harkins, are you in the audience?
No. Chairman, Planning Board Members.
Just your name.
Paul Rodjik.
Thank you.
Director of Public Works. 18, oh, 90 Fury Avenue, Middleton. I'm sorry, that was my old address. 90 Fury Avenue, Tiverton. So a lot of work was completed. The reestablish of the drainage swells is completed. Removal of silt from the drainage pond is completed. The final top cost of one and a half inches of asphalt has been completed. The concrete bounds have been installed. We don't know if they are all there because we haven't received the ASBILTS yet to know the location of them. So waiting on the ASBILTS and to complete the inspection of the concrete bounds. And we haven't received any formal notice that the homeowners association has been completed. And then as far as the, once we get that, I'd like to write a letter to the homeowners association about the evergreens that were planted in the right of way. We will let them leave them there as long as the homeowners association maintains them and to know that the town is not responsible for any damage to them. And if they have to be removed for any utility project, the town will not reinstall them.
Okay, so hold that thought for one moment.
Sure.
I'm gonna go to our solicitor. Did, did we have a question regarding the actual establishment of a homeowners association for this particular one? I, I thought you were doing some research for us.
I think we, you said, Paul, there's no, there's no formal association created yet as far as we know.
As far as we know, they haven't supplied us with anything stating that.
Yeah, so typically that, you know, because the initial approval required a maintenance plan, which included that maintenance being performed by a homeowners association. Prior to closing this out, we have to have a copy of those bylaws and evidence of who the officers are and, you know, some, something that shows us that they have the financial capacity and the, you know, they're assessing the homeowners to create reserves to pay for maintenance.
Okay.
So that, that would all be a requirement just based on the initial approvals. That's what they proposed, and so that's what they're gonna need to provide.
Great. So how about any questions for any Board members for Mr. Rodjik?
Yeah, I do.
Please, Mr. Harding.
It sure seemed, at times.
Okay.
It sure seemed that they absolutely positively did not want our association, the homeowners, and so.
We're, Mr. Harding, we're talking about a different subdivision. This is not Cutler Court, this is Elm Street.
Okay, I thought the people also from Elm Street were likewise, were completely blown away. They thought they went out of their way and they were upset thinking there was a, I, I thought so. I know the other, you were saying off a glen.
That was the residents of Cutler Court. I talked to a few homeowners on Elm Street, and some of them said in the beginning, he started collecting money for a homeowners association, but there was nothing in writing, so I don't think they're against it as far as I know.
Great, that makes life easier.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for DPW Director? So is it fair to say, Paul, that they've actually, they've made a considerable amount of progress in your, in your opinion?
Yes.
Okay. Enough so that we could grant them another continuance to continue what they're doing before we take any other action? Is that a fair?
Yes.
Okay. How much time do you think they need?
It's just the ASBILTS and the homeowners association, so that'll take no time to get it done. I don't know if they're working on it or not.
So you heard we're gonna have a meeting in December, which is roughly three and a half weeks away. Is that enough time to get another update from them?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
So what's, what's the Board's pleasure for this item? Do we can? Yeah, speaking there.
To the December 11th meeting.
Okay. Got a motion to have Luke second. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
A call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is public hearing. Modification to the approved final plan of West Main Solar One, Zog Marion Trustee and Regal LLC applicants for property located at 1348 West Main Road, assesses plat 44, Lot 15, in a commercial district. Applicant is requesting a subdivision, relinquishing the no-cut buffer and moving the westerly-planted buffer 40 feet to the east. I think Mr. Regan is here for the applicant. Right on cue, right on cue.
Peter Regan, on behalf of the applicants here, we're having a conversation with one of the neighbors, so if we could hold this matter until the next matter is completed, that'd give us some time.
Unfortunately, you are the last matter, Mr. Regan.
Okay, well, why don't we'll get started then.
You need a couple of minutes, that's fine.
Just two minutes would be.
Sure thing, take it. Okay. We're just gonna hold off while this gets settled unless there's anything else, Ms. Hitchen, that we need to discuss.
No, there's, there's not.
All righty. We'll give them a couple of minutes as we try to get this settled. Was quick.
Thank you.
All right, just, can you just give us your name and address for the record?
Sure, so Peter Regan of Sayre Regan and Thayer here tonight representing Regal LLC and Marion Zog, who are the owners of the prop.
Quiet it down so we can hear the speaker, please.
130 Bellevue Avenue in Newport. So representing the owners of the property at 1348 West Main Road. This matter was before you last month. At that time, we were asked to meet with the neighbors and try to come up with a plan to address their concerns about gaps in the vegetative screen that was installed by the solar tenant on the property. And just as context, there were 398 green giant arbovitae's planted as part of a vegetative screen all the way around. We met last week with a number of the neighbors on three sides of the solar field and wanna thank the neighbors for giving us their time and inviting us out to their properties. And what we saw at that meeting is that while the trees that were previously planted will at some point provide a very effective screen, they're growing now at the rate of about three feet per year, there are definitely areas and gaps in that screen that allow the neighbor to see more of the solar field than they should, and so.
Can you take, excuse me, Mr. Regan, can you take the cell phone outside, ma'am, please? Hello, you can't answer the phone in here, ma'am. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Regan.
No problem. So as a result of that, we put together a plan, which we just received this afternoon. And with me is Kevin Alveson, who is our landscape architect, as well as Neil Hingarani from Narragansett Engineering. We put a plan together to fill in some of those gaps and hopefully provide some more current screening while that, the original 398 trees continue to grow in. And so the plan is to plant between 45 and 50 additional trees. These would be green giant arbovitae's, seven to eight feet at the start, or other varieties if the neighbors prefer them. And the plan would be to meet with each of the neighbors that we've met with, and I can have Mr. Alveson review the plan with you and, and look at where we would actually strategically place each of these trees. Because depending upon what angle you're at, you know, there may be a gap where some of these trees that were previously planted were staggered, but there's a hole in between two of them that haven't been filled in yet. So we would work with the neighbors to, to do that and would be happy to have that be a condition of the approval. We would, we provided this plan today to the planning staff. And when we meet with the neighbors and identify the exact location of those trees, we would update that plan and provide it to staff. I would also point out that this is, you know, this request is part of a plan to subdivide this property and sell the front portion of the property. However, my clients are gonna continue to own the property on which the solar field is leased and will continue to own the property in which all these trees will be planted. So my clients aren't going anywhere, they're gonna be here. And with this being a condition, the town has an effective enforcement mechanism to make sure that we're taking care of that. So I do have Mr. Alveson here, if anybody has any questions about the landscape plan first.
So maybe we could just have him come up and give us a quick rendition of what, you know, what's proposed. I know we've been through some of it, but if you could maybe point it out on the plan for the Board.
Sure.
We understand where you're gonna add additional plantings and whatnot.
Sure.
That's acceptable.
For the record, my name is Kevin Alveson, Registered Landscape Architect from Wakeford, Rhode Island, 360 Anacotucket Road. Thank you. Yeah, so as Mr. Regan had, had mentioned, we met last week with the, with the Butters. There was a group of five or six Butters that have been at previous meetings and expressed concern about some of these, these gaps in the, in the sightlines to the solar array through the existing buffer that was planted. And so we met with Butters to the north and determined in particular, there's, there's two areas, you can see in the north, which is up on your plan there. There's two main areas in particular where the topography and the existing vegetation just happens to be that it, it, it makes it much more visible in those spots. So towards the eastern side, there's kind of a, a little bit of a hill that goes down and then back up, so it provides this sort of gap. So you can see that the, well, well, one thing, just to step, step back, we did walk the property and the buffer that was proposed and approved as part of the original approval, all of those trees essentially have been planted, so, so that was the first thing, we wanna make sure that all that was done. And they were planted, as Mr. Regan had mentioned, in a staggered formation for it. And so the nature of the stagger allows trees to be able to grow out more fully and to grow more rapidly because they get better solar exposure throughout the, the sides of the tree. So that's the purpose of that. What can happen though with certain sightlines is if you can imagine, you're looking at a stagger that is a zigzag pattern. If you're looking at it from a side, you can see that there's some gaps that happen until the trees can grow in. And so that's, that's part of the, the issue that, that, that we saw out there. So in those areas where it was very obvious as far as gaps, you can see those two locations along the north. We also had talked about, there's some spot locations that may also need a couple of additional trees. So you'll see that there's an approximation on there with quantities. And as Mr. Regan had mentioned, the plan is to work with the Butters, make sure that the tree type, we're calling out for the purpose of the plan, the same green giants for their fast growth, their deer resistance, things of that nature. But if there are some significant, you know, places where they want to have some other type of tree variety, we're open to that as well. Along the eastern side of the site, there's two residents that we met with towards the northeast corner of the, of the property. One of which, the one that's at the very northeast corner, it's not quite as visible. There are some, some gaps that are sort of toward, towards the southwest corner of his property. So we're looking to infill in those areas. And then the, the butter just to the south of him, there is a lot more sort of openness just due to the fact that the, the topography in that area, it's not that they're open. You can see the trees in the background, it's just that they're, they're lower. And the trees are probably 12 feet tall at this point. Actually, they've grown about three feet this year, which is great. But as trees grow, the top grows faster and it's, it's a little wispy in the top. And then the next year, it grows up and it fills in that next part that was below it. So in order to get a little bit more cover right now, what we're proposing is a, is a small planting through there with maybe perhaps a berm, about, give a two and a half to three-foot berm on the backside to give the trees a little bit more height to start. Going further south, we met with another butter, which is actually almost the opposite of conditions. So it just happens to be that the, that the, the trees, I mean, the, the solar panels are kind of right at eye level as opposed to being up or down. So although again, the trees are probably at about 12 feet tall right now, which we did witness out there, the tops of them are kind of open and wispy. So we wanted to find some, some, some gaps where it's logical to be able to plug in some additional buffer through there. One thing that we talked about on the eastern side is that there's some scrub brush that's on the, on the, the solar panel side of that wood line that's there. That's sort of a transitional area that has just some kind of scrubby. There's a lot of like vines and things that are in there. So what we'd like to do is actually go into that area a little bit, five or six feet, to give ourselves like a more open space to be able to plant between the buffer that was planted and the wood line that's there right now. Along the south, it's a different condition. There's a butter to the southeast corner, as well as one that we met with right along the southern, the southern border of the site. And in that situation, it's, the, the direct view right into the solar field, it's not, it's not visible. But when you're standing on his deck or his porch, you look to the left, you pan left, and that's that condition I was talking about with the zigzag plantings. So you can kind of see these alleys between the trees. And so what we're proposing is filling and plugging those holes essentially with some additional vegetation. And then it's the same scenario for the woman at the, at the southeast corner of the site. Just happens to be that her angle into the site is right between some of those alleyways of the, of the stagger. So the, the idea is to plug in some additional trees to fill those gaps until those trees can, can fully grow together and, and become a contiguous border. I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Any questions for the landscape architect? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I understand that there was also a question with regard to noise about when the front lot is eventually developed. And just so you know, when the lot, front lot is developed by the new owner, this Board will have another opportunity to take a look at what goes on there because whatever development is proposed is gonna come to you for development plan review. But I understand there was a question about whether the removal of the trees between West Main Road and the solar field would cause more traffic noise to be transported to the neighbors to the east. So we did have Neil Hingarani take a look at that, and he's prepared a report that I have a copy of, that I'd like to provide to the, to the Board as an exhibit. So what I'd like to do is to have Mr. Hingarani just sort of walk you through his analysis and his findings with regard to that issue.
Great, just to name an address for the record.
Of course, Neil Hingarani, 3102 East Main Road, Portsmouth. Good evening, everyone. So my office prepared this analysis. It's a very simplistic analysis. You could do it on a scratch pad or calculator on your phone. But this makes an assumption that there's no impediments and you have a straight line distance as indicated in the image in the top right corner. We have approximately 1,200 feet between West Main and the neighbors on Sweet Farm Road in the back. So this is not to say that there's no traffic noise, but sound attenuates with distance, right? And that's just one of the basic laws of, of the universe, the inverse square law. So if you have traffic that's running at maybe 70 to 80 decibels on West Main, assuming no impediments, 1,200 feet away, that's gonna be, be reduced to somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 decibels, which is probably a light speaking voice. It's a very simplistic analysis. In reality, there are things in the way, right? There are, eventually there will be buildings, but there are trees, there's a solar field. There's also topography, which I would say works in our favor to provide reduction. So we would expect the real world conditions to, to potentially be even better than this outside of, you know, differences in atmospheric conditions and wind. So I think the point at the end of the day is, is, is the distance alone helps attenuate that traffic noise. And, and the modification of this buffer shouldn't have a significant or detrimental impact of the, the sound levels from traffic for those neighbors in, on Sweet Farm.
Any questions for this witness?
And as I said, the Board, when the front lot is, is eventually developed, the Board will have another shot at, at looking at that issue and determining whether you think there's any additional buffer or sound attenuation that should be included at that point in time. So that's all I have. I know, although we're last, I know the Patriots are on tonight, so.
Well, we're gonna open it up to some public.
Absolutely.
This one, and then maybe we'll have some redress there. Thank you. So we're gonna open up this petition to any public comment. Anyone in the audience would like to comment on it? Hi. Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Lark Rodjik, 73 West Passage Drive. I just wanted to thank the Board for the last meeting where you listened to the neighbors. I think that that's why we ended up with a resolution that I think the neighbors are pretty happy with. And I think it's gonna make a really big difference. I know that the solar people here have really tried to make everyone that complained and was upset happy, so I just wanted to thank everybody.
Thank you, I appreciate those comments. Anyone else from the audience, or anybody online that would like to speak?
If there's anybody online that would like to comment on this application, just virtually raise your hand so I can elevate you to speak. There's nobody.
Nobody online, okay. Mr. Regan, it looks like you did a good job. Thank you for your attention to that detail. So what is the Board's pleasure? I know that there was a, an application for a subdivision, so that's what we continued it for, to discuss what the applicant just went through to improvements to the buffer. It looks like that was satisfied. They've made a suggestion that we could make it conditional on the planting of the vegetation. And, and if that's the case, maybe we, if it's the Board's pleasure, we could authorize the Town Planner as the administrative officer to sign anything after inspection.
Yeah, so just from a timing standpoint, because we, we have a buyer for the front lot. He has financing that is in place that will not be there indefinitely. We, our plan is to plant, do this additional landscaping as soon as, you know, we can, subject to weather conditions, because we want whatever trees are planted to, to survive as well as availability of trees at this point in the year. So we had the, the request for the modification of the prior approval. And so we, we would like to be in a position to, to have this be a condition, but also to be able to proceed with the subdivision so that we can proceed with the sale. And as I said, I think the town has full enforcement authority to make sure that we're, we go ahead and proceed with that. But, so I just wanted to make, I mean, in terms of how we put the, the decision together.
Go ahead, Mr. Tibbetts.
You're looking for some grace on when you've implemented, you know, the additional 4550 arbovitae's or?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna try to get them in as soon as we can right now. But once again, it's subject to availability, subject to weather conditions, and it's also subject to, I've got a, we have to coordinate. I represent the property owners, the basically the landlords of the solar tenants. So we've gotta coordinate with them.
Overlap, but that, I, I guess I'd be curious, that might be subject to the landscape architects. You know, what's the best time of year to plant these arbovitae's so that they take? Obviously, if they don't, then, you know, you're coming back to replace them, but. So we wanna plant them in January, I assume.
This is Mr. Alveson again, Alveson.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So when it comes to planting, as, as Mr. Regan had mentioned, availability is really the biggest issue right now at this time of the year with finding the plant material, because if it's out of the ground already and it's already balled up or it's planted in a container, it's actually a great time to plant right now. However, as we go into later December, as soon as the ground freezes, then you can endanger the, the, the health of the plant. But if the plants are dormant, which they are going dormant or mostly dormant right now and already out of the ground, it's, it's not a bad time to plant right now. It's actually a good time to plant. It's just if the timing works out for us to be able to get all the plantings before that ground freezes. that ground freezes, that's our, that's our issue.
Mr. Regan, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the requirement to relief, for relief on the no cut buffer, is that something that has to happen immediately? So will the new, will the new owner start clearing that in the short term?
I don't believe so. Mr. Harvey represents the buyer of the property. And actually, we talked about this question today because we thought that might come up. But, but yeah, I mean, and maybe that, that's a way of, once again, keeping some leverage to make sure that these plantings go in, to say that the, the no cut buffer is not going to be released until such time as this planting plan goes in, I think.
December, that's great, if that's spring, that's fine, you know, we, we.
Let's see what Mr. Harvey says after, name and address for the record.
William Harvey, 97 John Clark Road, Middletown. The buyer doesn't quite know exactly what he's going to do with the property at this point. He is here, he may be watching on Zoom to chime in, but he's obviously got to come back in front of the board to, to, when, once he figures out what exactly he wants to do. So at this point, he's not quite sure, but he doesn't, he's got a loan in the works right now, so he doesn't want to, you know, have that hung up by having conditions pending for the plantings.
But if we just don't, if we say we're not going to release the no cut buffer until the plantings are all in place, would that impact your, your buyer?
I don't think that it would, no.
Okay.
And Leah, is there any reason that we would have a problem finishing the subdivision with that condition?
No.
Yeah, and we can, and we can work, we'll work with Mr. Harvey's client to make sure that we've got whatever guarantees they need in order to be able to move forward with that. But I think that's a great solution, appreciate the suggestion.
Mr. Bashan is raising his hand, I'll elevate him, he is the, the potential buyer here.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Can hear you.
Awesome, okay. Oliver Bashan, 277 Union Street in Portsmouth. To Mr. Harvey's point and to Mr. Regan's point, ultimately, I, I don't know, like they're correct, I don't know what is going to be approved to be put there, but in the best case scenario, all I can say is the sooner the trees are removed, the sooner the potential buffer, the, the rest of the work gets done. Not to say it's going to happen on day one, but I just mean, obviously, the sooner, if a building is approved, the sooner the trees are removed, the sooner the building will be there, which wouldn't affect, increase the effectiveness of the buffer. If that makes sense.
So we just, sir, we just want to make sure that, we're going to try and put together a motion, we just don't want to impact your sale. If we were to condition it that the vegetation would not be removed until the trees are planted, is, would, would that present a negative impact to you?
It very well could because, I, I don't know, I'd have to speak with the, with the lending office for sure, because the, there is a timeline that I need to have plans submitted to them to show that there's going to be some development. Because if I purchase the land, for example, and these trees don't get planted, let's just say till the spring, that leaves me about four or five months of this lot sitting dormant, which, well, it's not beneficial to the, the finance, they're going to have a problem with it just sitting there.
Okay.
I would assume they would.
Well, we have sort of a catch 22 because if, if we can't complete the subdivision until the plants are in, if for some reason we can't get the plants in until early spring, then, then we can't close on the sale of the property until that point in time. And, and Mr. Alveson just mentioned one thing, part of what Oliver is, is requesting to do and part of the approval is to take that existing buffer on the, on the west side of the field and move it a little bit further and move it up to make it more effective. That's not something that can be done this time of year because those plants are in the ground and you really can't move those this, during the winter without those plants taking a serious hit.
Sure.
So it, once again, I defer to Mr. Harvey and if.
Can I also just ask, and maybe in the response to, to think about the fact that there will be a return here for the development plan approval for the buyer?
Yeah.
And so relief from any condition we set tonight will certainly be added.
Okay.
Just given the scope and additional landscaping and whatever the new plan is, all those things, you know, will weigh on the, the planning board.
Sure, that the plantings get done, because he's going to have to. He's going to have to come back before you to get approval for anything he wants to do. So I mean, that's, I think the best leverage that you're going to have is, well, did the plantings go in? If not, then we're not going to approve what you want to do.
And, and there may be circumstances where the, the, you know, it's February and the plants aren't going in for sure, but maybe there's some other way to give us the, the assurance that they'll be put in as soon as the weather permits. But I, I, we could solve that at a different meeting, we don't have to solve that tonight and we can let them close their deal if that's what we're aiming for.
I think that's what we're trying to do is figure out how to close your deal for you.
I appreciate it.
I mean, is it still appropriate without the condition, though, to establish a, a timeline in the motion for the expectation that you'll be able to realistically complete, you know, the?
Are you suggesting?
The no cut buffer and the, the plantings, just to put it into the motion? Like is May realistic?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It sounds like we're going to maybe have most of these by December and.
It's certainly possible, but I would certainly think that by May that we wouldn't have any issue with getting everything completed.
Not saying it's a condition, but just to, just to put it in.
Sure, makes sense.
Yeah.
So we can move it along.
Can't they, if they do get some plants, plant those on the west side first, just to get that out of the way for waiting, if they don't have all the plants available?
I, I think the intention is to try and satisfy the neighbors first, is that?
Exactly, yeah, exactly. You know, once again, we, we don't know when Mr. Bashan is going to be removing the trees on the west side or moving forward with any development plan, but we do know that the neighbors are looking for relief now, so that's, that's really where our focus is. And that's, that's what we've, that's what we've told them we're going to do.
And they, and they've been here a lot longer too, so.
So maybe Mr. Tibbetts' suggestion of May to have all the planting.
That's fine with us, yeah.
Okay.
No problem there.
But not restricting the sale.
Correct.
Not restricting the sale, but, but, but not releasing the no cut buffer until those trees are completed, are completely installed.
Might I, might I suggest something?
Sure, sir.
So the, the only hesitation I have, just thinking aloud of not releasing the no cut buffer, is number one, is it's going to be very difficult for me to come up with a plan and to get the land surveyed and properly surveyed without removing the trees. I'm not saying clear cut absolutely everything. I think maybe I can have a discussion with the town and determine, I, I understand the concept and the principle, like I said, of, of leaving some, enough trees to continue such buffer in, in the meantime, but it's, I think it's a big hindrance to come up with a plan to bring to you guys, because ideally I'd like to come up, if, if we can't do any construction in the winter, because the ground is frozen, I'd like to get all the paperwork done in, in the meantime, and then have a, you know, a, a head start come the springtime to actually quickly develop, for example, whatever may be, may be approved.
Well, I would just point out that the property's been fully surveyed as, as part of the subdivision process that we're asking you to approve. So that's, that's already, all that work's already been done. And it wasn't, and it wasn't hindered by the fact that the trees were on the property.
And if you need to clear brush or, or otherwise access lines of the property, I don't think that's prohibited under the current restriction.
If we get a motion to, to go to approval, maybe we can authorize the administrative officer to approve the, the selective cutting that has to take place. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, I think that could be visited with the, with the town, that's, that seems reasonable.
Okay. I think we got the bones of a, of a motion here somewhere.
Are we ready for a motion?
Give it a shot, Mr. Tibbetts.
Can you keep me straight? You know, oh, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the modification to the approved final plan of West Main Solar One, including approval for a subdivision, relinquishing the no cut buffer and moving the westerly buffer 40 feet to the east. Conditioned on including an additional 45 to 50 giant green arborvitae's in coordination with the abutting neighbors or alternate variety, you know, supported by the neighbors. With berming, as appropriate discussed, I'll say, to plug the line of sight gaps. Having this done by the end of May 2026. Providing the authority to the town planner as the administrative officer to approve the selective cutting. What am I missing?
But otherwise preserving the no cut buffer until.
Thank you.
The completion of the plantings.
Not releasing the no cut buffer until the plantings are complete.
Yeah, and then I would just like you to add that Mr. Alveson, Alveson, is that correct? Alveson personally supervises the installation so that we have those specifically put exactly where the residents and, and the applicant have worked them out for the new plantings.
With the additional supervision from Mr. Alveson of the planting locations with the abutting neighbors in conjunction with the neighbors.
Good. We have a second for Mr. Harding. Teddy, you got that? Maybe? Okay. All right, any discussion on the motion? I'm going to call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, one of the best motions I've heard in a long time. Appreciate your point, good time, bye.
Ms. Hitchens, I think that that's, I think we went through everything, it's now adjournment? Is that correct?
I have nothing else to address.
Nothing else. Mr. Harding, seconded by Ms. Wilson. All in favor, say aye. Aye, adjourned.
So the next meeting will be December 11th.
December 11th, next regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
If you're going to watch the paints, you'll trans.